All right, I'm going to call to order the July 24th, 2023 Royal Oak City Commission Meeting to order. We're going to begin with an invocation given by Commissioner Dubac, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I ask that you stand if you can, please.
So, tonight, we're all here for the same reason. We love our city and we are willing to dedicate our time and service to it. Not just to preserve our own quality of life, but so that in 30 years, our children could be proud of the legacy we've left them. But our legacy isn't just about the decisions we make, but how we make them. We live in tragically divisive political times, where even at the highest levels of American government, wild conspiracy theory and petty personal attacks are sadly more commonplace than thoughtful, informed debate and discussion. But it doesn't have to be that way here in our community, and we can all be proud that Royal Oakers consistently reject those who practice such tactics. So as we gather again tonight to make decisions about our shared future, let's strive to be the best possible versions of ourselves. Let's set an example that inspires the next generation with how we represent our values, how we address each other, how we listen to each other, and how we seek to see the good in each of us. Let's leave a legacy of good governance where well-meaning people, in spite of their differences, come together to build a stronger community and a more prosperous future.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. That brings us to probably our most exciting topic, agenda topic for this evening, which is the Michigan Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission presentation. So I will hand it over to literally this side of the room.
Mr. Mayor, and Congress, your City Commissioners and City Officials. My name is Robert Stevenson. I'm currently the Executive Director with the Michigan Association of Chiefs of Police. It's been my pleasure to hold this position for the last 11 years. Prior to that, I spent my police career in the city of Livonia, 37 years. And I'm very proud to be here tonight, representing the Michigan Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission for the presentation or the awarding of our Certificate of Accreditation to the Royal Oak Police Department. This is a monumentous occasion. This is a tremendous accomplishment. I don't think a lot of people recognize how much work went into earning this Certificate of Accreditation. Now, spending my police career in southeast Michigan, I can tell you that the Royal Oak Police Department has a very good reputation. But I can also tell you that having gone through this process, they've elevated their game to another level. I think oftentimes, when you're surrounded by excellence, you don't recognize what is around you, because you're just used to it. Now, we're from outside, and I can tell you, you have an excellent police department. But I'd like to put this into a little bit of perspective for you. In the state of Michigan, there are just shy of 600 police agencies. Of those 600 police agencies, 83 of them are county sheriffs, just shy of 400 are municipal agencies, and the rest are comprised of colleges, tribal police, and universities and hospitals and such. Out of the 600 police agencies there are in Michigan, your police department is the 59th to achieve the Certificate of Accreditation. Or to put it in a little different way, your department has been able to accomplish what over 90% of the other police agencies in the state of Michigan have yet to do. Significant accomplishment, a ton of work. I think everybody recognizes that the last few years, this has been difficult time for policing around the country, and much of it well-deserved, has been brought upon us. And there's been a lot of calls for so-called "police reforms." But I would hope that all of your citizens and the city officials would take solace and comfort in knowing that every single one of the so-called "police reforms" that citizens have asked for, your department has already done those. Every one of those policies is already in place and procedure, and they started this process not after the unrest, before the unrest. They did this on their own volition, well before a lot of departments are having to do that. So again, this is a significant accomplishment, and I'm extremely proud of your department. It's made our profession better. And when I started my little spiel here, I said, "We're here to award the Certificate of Accreditation." We don't give these out. They have to earn them. And I would like to introduce our Program Director, retired Chief Ron Wiles, to explain a little bit about what your department had to go through to earn this. Chief?
Well, good evening. It is an absolute pleasure to be here again. My name is Ron Wiles. I'm the Deputy Director with the Michigan Association Chiefs of Police and the Accreditation Program Director. Prior to that, I did my law enforcement career in Grambling Township, where I did 26 years there, the last six as the Chief of Police. Now, we're all somewhat familiar with accreditation. Our kids go to accredited schools. We go to accredited hospitals if we're injured or need assistance. But law enforcement accreditation is right along those lines. It's a progressive, time-proven way to increase performance and service of our law enforcement agencies. The foundation of the program lies in the voluntary compliance with 108 best-practice standards in our profession. Now, the key word there is "voluntary." No one forced your police department to do this. They did it to get better. They did it to elevate their game. And it's something that the department should be very proud of, you should be very proud of, and the residents of the city of Royal Oak should be very proud of. It is a significant professional accomplishment. So let me kind of walk you through the process of what had to take place. First off, someone had to make the decision to apply for accreditation. We hear all the time, all over the state, "I'm getting ready to get ready." Someone's got to take that first step and say, "We're doing it, because it's the right thing to do." During that first step, they have to appoint an accreditation manager. That person puts in a significant amount of time, effort, and commitment into this process to make sure this is successful. They are the change agent for this program. And make no mistake, this program, Accreditation, will change your agency for the better. The second step is what we call the self-analysis period. We give agencies two years to look at their current written directives, look at our 108 standards, and make sure they're in compliance. And I can tell you, initially, they were not in compliance. They had to make changes to their written directives to become compliant, several changes. But it's not just enough to say you're compliant. You have to prove it. And they have to collect these things, what we call "proofs." Now, I mentioned there's 108 standards, but each standard has several bullet points. When you add up all those bullet points, you're talking over 800 proofs that they had to show to our assessors, which is the third step. When we bring in a team of trained assessors from outside the area to make sure you're doing what you say you're doing, to look at those proofs, to make sure you're in compliance. Fourth step, they go before the Michigan Law Enforcement Accreditation Commissioners, and they ask questions about the process, about where they struggled, where they did well, where they had to improve. And the Commission makes that final decision whether to award accreditation or not. And I'm proud to say, in this case, that the Commission decided to award accreditation for the great work that was done with this process with your agency. Now, you would think that would be enough, but there's one more step. Accreditation is only good for a period of three years. At the end of that three years, I will send in another team of assessors to make sure that they're still compliant with the standards. And I can tell you, next time, it will be more challenging, because now there's 128 standards. We're always updating our standards to make sure that we have best practice in law enforcement profession. So you should be very proud. It is a significant professional accomplishment. I'm terribly proud of the work they've done in getting to know your team here and the effort that they put into it. And with that, I'd like to introduce our current President, Kyle Knight, Chief of Police for Harbor Springs Police Department.
Hello there. So, we are an accredited agency, and I -- well, it's very small. I was talking to the Chief, and they have 79 sworn, we have seven sworn, but it's a challenge. And so, kudos to Chief Moore and the team back there. Our accreditation manager works very, very hard to keep us accredited. And kudos to all of you for the expenditure of the funds and for allowing them the manpower, because it's a commitment that you make, and I know our city council made it up there, to allow the agency to spend the money in order to do it. And it makes us all look better in the police profession. So with that, I want to read a certificate here. And it's -- we don't get rain in Harbor Springs, so I don't know what's happening down here. And we don't have humidity up there, but this is a -- I told Chief Moore, this is a beautiful sound. I've never been in Royal Oak before, and this is beautiful. You guys have done a great job. So, to all who see this certificate, know that the Royal Oak Police Department have voluntarily complied with the standards established by the Michigan Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission, deemed essential for the delivery of professional police services and the protection of their community, is hereby awarded this Certificate of Accreditation, effective this first day of July in the year of 2023, for a term of three years. This is a heck of an accomplishment. Chief Moore, great job. I understand this, old lady's accreditation manager? I'm going to hire her.
If I may. First of all, I just want to say thank you for the support throughout this process. It was an extremely long journey to get where we are today, and just an unbelievable amount of work. But I think, to echo those sentiments, we truly are better today than we were before, so we want to continue to improve. So, thank you. And I want to thank really all the police officers that bought into this program and understand why we're doing it, because if they didn't understand it, they weren't going to be behind it. And I think it's going to pay dividends in the long run for us, so I appreciate their support. And really, my team behind me -- come on, a little closer, it's okay. Thank you. It's been extremely difficult, and I appreciate it. And I want to give a special thanks to Lieutenant Carly Renaud. She is our accreditation manager, and she's the one that has met the probably undoable timelines time and time again, and some -- a lot of things just seemed unreasonable to get where we are today. So I just wanted to say thank you very much. I appreciate it. And we're going to continue to pledge to improve, and we owe it to the community, and that's what we're going to do. So, thank you very much.
Amazing. Excellent work.
I can barely make through my items, my wife. It's nice work.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for all your hard work.
Let's all take picture with the -- let's all get together here.
Wow, that's a -- so I want to know, where's that going? I mean, part of the whole design of the new PD was to have a place for all these awards, right?
Do you mind, we'll do a couple pictures. We'll get -- you know what would be a really nice picture? Little bit of them by there, and all the council behind them. That would be a problem. Does that work? Yeah. We've done this once or twice. If you go back there, right where the mayor's, yeah, and your team around him. There you go. And then if all the council people would get -- there we go. Now that we see everybody. There we go. That's a great picture. You gotta make that picture a little bit more portable. You'll be famous, you'll be on our Facebook page.
Chief, would you like to comment?
Thank you for all this news.
Yeah, amazing, great presentation, really an incredible accomplishment, and, you know, we couldn't be more proud. We've always been proud of the women and men of our PD, and this just underscores it that much more. Now, the rest of the world has a more layer of understanding why we're so proud of the work you guys do every day. I mean, we're out talking to people at the grocery store, we're on the street, you know, we're kind of doing the elective thing, and there's not a person out there that doesn't have respect for our department, so it's really good to see this accreditation and validation. Thank you.
How exciting is that? All right, this -- item number five, the approval of the agenda. Does anyone wish to make a motion? Commissioner Dubac? I'll move for the agenda as presented. Motion by Commissioner Dubac, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Colo. Discussion? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. We have an agenda. All right, this brings us to public comment. Just a few ground rules. The City Commission values and relies on the input of our fellow citizens to help make decisions. Now's the time set aside for the public to address the City Commission on any city-related issue, whether it's on the agenda or not. I ask that comments be directed to the Commission as a whole and not to individual commissioners. If you wish to speak tonight at public comment, please wait until recognized by me, the mayor, and come up to the podium. For the record, we ask for your name and address. Please be mindful that the City Commission wants to hear from everyone who wishes to speak tonight, so comments are limited to three minutes per person or less, not per topic. There's a timer at the podium to help you keep track of your allotted time. If you don't wish to speak tonight, no problem. Email works great. Please note that we typically don't respond directly to questions during public comment. However, we are taking notes, and we'll address the questions when the agenda topic is discussed or refer to the proper city department if the matter isn't scheduled on the agenda. Our city manager is also taking notes, and we'll look into matters as needed. Mr. Fenton, who is our Deputy City Manager, is sitting in for Mr. Brake tonight, so he'll be taking the notes and making the referrals as necessary. So with that, we'll start with Mr. Nahat.
Thank you. I'll take less than three minutes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of the City Commission. My name's Ed Nahat. I live at 510 West Houstonia, right here in Royal Oak. And with the exception of a few wayward years in college and law school, I have been a lifelong resident of the city. I love it, and I love your service to it. Thank you. What a legacy with the police department, eh? You know, it takes me back to when I was 16 and a Royal Oak police officer pulled me off to the side of the road. I'm getting distracted. No, that's not why I'm here. I'm here to tell you the good news, that Shakespeare Royal Oak, our homegrown professional outdoor theater festival, starts in just a couple of days. And we are going to be presenting Love's Labor's Lost, set in the 1980s at an historical African-American college. It's hilarious. You've got to see it. Please come. It starts Thursday, and it goes for four nights this week and four nights next week. You can look it up on shakespeareroyal oak dot com. But that's not all. We also have a high school program where local students learn their own show. They not only act in it, but they work backstage in stage management and costuming and other kind of direction. And those students will be performing A Winter's Tale on Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday of this coming week at 7:00 PM in the park. Now, that show is free, and we ask people to donate at the gate. It supports our education program. And finally, we have an education program for the younger students, grades one through eight. It's called Kids Act. And those kids learn how to do safe sword fighting, and soliloquies, and sonnets, and even improv. And they'll perform next Saturday at 11:00 AM, right in the park. We've built the stage. We've built the theater. If you come on August 7th, it'll be all gone. So please come before then and help support your local professional artists that live right here in our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Nahat. Really appreciate it. Always a great show.
Thank you.
Well-produced, well-orchestrated. Mr. Ashley?
Can't wait for a sword fight.
My name, Alan Ashley, live at Royal Oak Manor. I'd like to continue some good news. I also at Royal Oak Manor, we want to thank the Royal Oak Police, the Chief, for everything they do for us at Royal Oak Manor. This year marks 50 years that Royal Oak Manor has been in the city of Royal Oak. We are planning a little birthday party between now and hopefully September, maybe the first of October. I will let you know. But I don't know if you've all seen it, this is the original building with the bricks, small trees that are now very tall. This is the original -- this building was completed in December 1972 under Section 236 as a 202 conversion. The mortgage was $3,834,200. We just spent $8 million on redoing the building. There are 247 apartments which are fully occupied by the spring of 1973. So that is, we've been here 50 years. The waiting list contains 100 names. This is what really got me when I got this. Monthly charges averages $77 for a studio and $87 for a one-bedroom. Prices have slightly gone up. But again, soon as I know when we've decided on it, I will invite the whole Commissioners and Police Department to come out and celebrate our 50th birthday. Thank you very much.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Ashley. Come on, this way. There's a -- my eyes couldn't tell who raised their hand first. She's faster than you, Mr. Harrison.
Well, I wasn't going to go now, but I wanted to mention the -- don't start my time yet. The senior high riser, I visited with the former city planner when that was being constructed, and he was so excited about building that and, you know, being one of the first in the area. So anyways, I wish he was here to see 50 years later what's going on. Okay. Regarding tonight's agenda, Janice Wagner. Regarding tonight's agenda, the animal shelter, again, I'm going to say I don't think it should be sundown, especially with what's going on right now. It's no reflection on the manager, on Jody's job. It's just that the purpose of the committee is to act in an advisory capacity. And right now, with everything that's going on at the shelter, I think now's the time to keep it going, at least until we're in the new building. I know she wants to do some new things there. We should still be advising. And I'm very sad that the senior advisory committee is going to be the last one that's brought before you. It's been six years I've been asking to have that. We've done -- Charlene Douglas has done a wonderful job with the senior task force. We've got a plan, and nothing's happening with it. It's just been sitting out there. Few things done by the city manager's office, but you need a committee to drive it, and so we need to get that going, especially since 23% of our population is seniors. So, a few months ago, I went to the charter review meeting, because I was looking at the meeting minutes, and there was nothing. Nothing was happening on reviewing the charter. And what was mentioned was that they had asked the city manager's office on several occasions to supply them with anything that he felt was necessary, that should be looked at, and he didn't. And now, with our agendas, I think they're pretty anemic, in the past three at least. There's hardly anything on it. So I'm going to give you a few suggestions, like I did with them. With the ordinances, tonight, you're looking at the LED ordinances. I would suggest, I did a little thing on Facebook about adding signs when you have any variance requests, any public hearings in the zoning, planning, or here, that will go out in front of the property, just to alert people there's going to be a public hearing. And overwhelmingly, there were people who didn't want it, but overwhelmingly, people were in favor of it. So I would look at that ordinance. The ethics ordinance, you don't follow it, so either change it or follow it. There's only two people on this commission that have bothered to fill out the ethics form, which basically says what property do you own, what businesses do you own that would be in Royal Oak or affect Royal Oak. Also, you could look at handicap parking in the downtown, which was recommended by your own authority. That's kind of fallen off the table. I haven't heard anything about that. But a big one is ARPA status. Where do we stand with that? What kind of money have we spent? What do we have left? What do we still have plans to spend money on? Is there any other things out on the table that we're thinking about doing? The public should know about that. That's $28 million. And lastly, I had some other stuff, but I'm running out of time. Lastly, I think when a member of the community who's given so much has passed away, that they should be acknowledged, male or female, should be acknowledged in the agendas. We lost Mayor Pecy Lewis and John Winland, both big contributors to this city, and they should -- their passing should have been acknowledged at our meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wagner. Mr. Harrison?
Bill Harrison, Royal Oak, you made the right choice, ladies first. We need to return to having an alternate or alternates for the zoning board of appeals. There was an appeal to allow a single-family home on Sylvan Road to be used as a duplex. There was not a full board in attendance. The appellant chose to have the vote postponed until next meeting. There's no guarantee that there will be a full board at the next meeting, and the public was so advised. Even if there is a full board at the August meeting, the previously missing members will not have heard the comments from the residents. And the residents were advised that they would not receive a notice of the meeting, that the public hearing is over, and that they will not have an opportunity to speak. However, there was no motion to close the public hearing, just a postponement. I understand that the appellant will have an opportunity to speak. This is not fair to the residents on all points. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Anybody else? Anybody named the initials J.E.? No? Going once? You got to say it louder. Go on twice. All right, we're going to close public comment and bring the meeting to this side of the table, which brings us to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull anything off the consent agenda? Commissioner Hunt?
Item I.
Item I, approval for second extension of Guide House Financial Consulting Services?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else? Commissioner Colo?
Item D, please.
Item D, Department of Public Services request to fill vacancy. Okay, and I'm going to see real quick if I need to pull something off. If you guys bear with me, I had a thought on something on one of the items, but...
Was it J?
It was item E. You know what? We'll pull off item E, just to confirm. Okay, so the consent agenda consists of everything with the exception of D, E, and I. Is there a motion for the consent agenda? Motion by Commissioner Dubac, or second? Second by Commissioner Colo. Any discussion?
Mr.?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to point out, item J, I didn't feel the need to pull it, but I just want to highlight it. The Commission for the Arts has approved two new murals, one at the Tap Room downtown on Main Street, another one at Conover. So they're really beautifying that alley, that area down there. It's just such an awesome program. So I want to, you know, thank the Commission and thank these store owners for, you know, reinvesting right into our community again. It's pretty cool.
Yeah, great point. We're seeing, it wasn't a, you know, a trendy element that we continue to see since, you know, the Commission of Arts really started to push with this. We're seeing, you know, projects like this happen on a regular basis, and these are two beautiful new ones, especially in the alley, which will be really nice.
Yep.
All right, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. We'll do it in alphabetical order here, so we'll start with Commissioner Colo, Department of Public Services request to fill vacancy.
I think Mr. Pan.
Mr. Fenton?
I will take that one. With regard to that item, Public Works Director Aaron Filipski was not able to make this meeting due to a last-minute emergency. Therefore, respectfully, I would ask that we postpone this agenda item for until the next meeting.
Okay. The motion postponed?
So moved.
Okay. Moved by Commissioner Douglas, second by Commissioner Dubac. Discussion? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Item E, Card Connect. I pulled this off because, and I'm looking for it right now, there's a lot of language in here, and I know it's been reviewed, but the thing that I've always been a stickler on is the term of the agreement. And so I just want to confirm the term of the agreement, or what our exit clauses are in the event that we find new opportunities to bid out all credit card services for all city services and get a better deal. You know what I mean? We've always tried, we've always had this kind of clunky alternating... Plus, I'm getting annoyed when I go to places and they're charging me 4% to use my credit card, when 90% of people use their credit card. Mr. Colo?
So, Mr. Mayor, what's it sound like? Is that you like to postpone this potentially, so the staff look into those terms and then maybe get back to us at a future meeting?
I could, but if it's less than a year, I'm willing to support it now and not cause any issues. But this print is so small, I'm having a hard time.
Because it seems as if DPS will be at the next meeting also, so they might have a good opportunity to... good opportunity to come talk to us then.
I'm just looking for term. Give me 30 more seconds. Okay.
I don't see it in there either, Mayor.
Okay, so there isn't a term in there, so maybe we're not crazy, which means, is it indefinite? Is it month-to-month? So I don't, I don't know. Maybe I'll ask Mr. Fenton, do you see this as being an issue if this is postponed for...
No, I do not.
Okay. So I would entertain a motion to postpone. Commissioner Colo? Is there a second? Second, Commissioner Douglas, are any discussion? All right, with no call, uh, yes, Commissioner Colo?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I just want to say, we've seen a lot of different credit card authorizations also throughout various departments. I think, I would also, I think as a commission, we should give staff to look at a unified credit card processing. I know we kind of talked about this during budgeting. I think now might be the time to actually give that direction and ask staff, after you postpone this, to actually come back to us too with a unified solution for the city. So our fees are more advantageous for our citizens, our networks are connecting, kind of achieving the goals that we've looked at.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, that's always the end game, right?
Yeah.
Maybe bring the courts into it if they're doing stuff as well.
Well, we authorize their system, so yeah, that'd be great.
Did you find it?
I did, and I don't like it, so...
Okay, good, so we'll postpone it. Good instincts. Good instincts, Mayor Cornea, as always. Leading the city right. Whenever you see a bank contract, you gotta be skeptical. All right, um, so I'll call for the vote to postpone this. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, motion passes. We will postpone it and hopefully get some better terms or start over. All right, that brings us to item I. Commissioner Hunt?
So, Mr. Fenton, I understand that this is just an extension of time for Guide House. There's no additional funds being expended. But can you explain what's anticipated that Guide House will be doing over the next year? I know there's only about 17% of the funding left to be allocated. What's expected over the next year from Guide House?
Besides offering us compliance guidance on how we're going to spend the remaining of that 17%, it's really giving us compliance on the programs that came out of the allocation plan that was approved in February. One example on the front of my mind right now is the nonprofit grant program for those nonprofits doing community programming in the city. We have a legal review that's making sure that the city is protected by these grant agreements, and then Guide House does the compliance review to make sure that it is in compliance with the federal requirements through the American Rescue Plan Act. So they'll be doing a combination of both throughout the rest of the year. As the manager of most of those programs, I'm using Guide House as needed, and that is why I've gotten three years of work under one contract.
Good job with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any motions?
Move approval.
Okay, we have Commissioner Hunt, motion, second by Commissioner Duba. Discussion? All right, with no call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. This brings us to number eight, the sign ordinance text amendment prohibiting channel and tube light, second reading. Mr. Fenton, are you going to shed some light on this?
That will be Mr. Hedges.
Bright idea.
No pun intended.
I didn't see Mr. Hedges back there.
Yes, good evening. The ordinance, sign ordinance amendment is before you for a second reading. It's to prohibit channel and tube lights around doors and windows of commercial buildings, as was requested by the commission. There's been no change to the language since the first reading. Again, that language was taken from standards we have in our zoning ordinance for marijuana establishments. Again, it's would be put into the sign ordinance and not the zoning ordinance. Other than that, be happy to answer any questions the commission may have on the amendment.
Questions for Mr. Hedges. Mr. Colo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So, as we, we have a handful of, you know, storefronts that have these lights in them as it is right now. How would those be phased out under this ordinance? What would prompt them to actually remove them?
Well, that's why it was proposed to put it in the sign ordinance rather than the zoning ordinance. If it's in the zoning ordinance, establishments that have existing conditions such as this would be granted legal nonconforming status, which means they could be, you know, left in place technically indefinitely. There's no such status conferred upon existing businesses with these items under the sign ordinance. Therefore, once it's adopted, if a business is either reported through a complaint or if our building division notices that they have them, they can be cited at that point. So they're not given any nonconforming status that they would be under the zoning ordinances, and, you know, places that now have them could be, potentially be cited once it's in place.
So, once this goes into effect, the lights would have to come down? If they, if they're up today, if this goes in 10 days' round, they would have to come down?
Correct. They would potentially be notified by the code enforcement officers, given the opportunity to comply. If they don't, the officers will take whatever measure they feel appropriate at that time.
Okay. And then, a couple other questions here. Does this, is there a carve-out? I didn't see one for an open, a sign indicating that they're open.
I believe that is covered under other areas in the sign ordinances, that there is a section, the exact section in some paragraph it is, I'm not familiar with that, but that type of sign is one that's allowed for all businesses in all sign areas. So that would not potentially fall under this provision.
Okay. And then, my last, thank you for that. My last question is, there is a carve-out in the language here that seasonal decorative displays. Is, so I don't know if this is for you, for our attorney here, but, you know, if we have holiday light, you know, the winter holiday lights up in July, is that a seasonal decorative display still?
Potentially. It's a carve-out that is included in other prohibited items in the sign ordinance, and we felt appropriate to include it within this as well. We don't go into detail defining any specific time period for those, for legal reasons, but it's, you know, potentially something in a, you know, non-traditional seasonal display could, you know, potentially fall through on this one.
I guess my question is to the attorneys at the table, does it have to say something about non-permanent, you know, so that people just don't go take out the lights that exist today and put a strand of Christmas lights up? You know, this is, shocked how there's green LED lights around the window. Do they take those LED lights out and put a Christmas strand, and now it's a, is that a seasonal display? I don't know. So I guess that's my only question. Does that, does that area of the language need some work before it's out?
Mr. City Attorney?
If I may, Mr. Mayor? Thank you. You know, I, I understand the question. It could be a potential loophole that you're looking to close, you know, and I, quite frankly, haven't looked into legal definitions or case law definitions of what might be seasonal decorative. I could claim it's Christmas in July and put those Christmas lights. So, I mean, obviously, it's going to be a judgment called by code enforcement with discussions with the people they choose to enforce, not choose, but enforce uniformly and reasonably across the board. But I think there is some authority, talking about seasonal decorative displays and what that timeframe is. I didn't come prepared to actually discuss the timing of that, but I think a straight-faced argument can be made in enforcement of that ordinance, what constitutes a seasonal decorative display as opposed to permanent, uh, display around a window, and maybe we should be able to distinguish. And ultimately, if we run into enforcement issues and we need to adjust the ordinance, we certainly can come back and say, ask the commission and inform the commission of what's worked and what hasn't worked, and maybe take a chance at, or take an opportunity to further define that. But again, I think this was taken from the zoning ordinance for the marijuana establishments. It was a copy paste. So the intent was to be consistent, and so that's why we used the language we did. So if we were to change this, then we should probably revisit the other ordinance as well so we're consistent across the board. But again, I think we can certainly distinguish between seasonal displays and what this is intending to prohibit.
Commissioner Duba?
Thank you, Mayor. So I just want to be clear, so that prohibit neon or RRL lights, fluorescent fixtures, fiber optic lights, LEDs, or bare light bulbs, used as permanent architectural details around doors and windows. So like Leo's iconic marquee, that's not relevant to this, which has at least two of those things, right?
In fact, Leo's marquee, I believe, was granted a number of sign variances when that one was installed. So no, this Leo's sign would not fall under this.
Okay. And a good number, I think, of our businesses have, like Neon is part of their official signage.
Yes.
You're talking about embellishments around doors and windows specifically.
Correct. Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Colo?
If there are any more questions, I'll move approval on second reading.
Motion by Commissioner Colo, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Douglas, discussion? All right. No dad jokes, I got a couple good ones. I'm just going to call for the vote.
Come on, illuminate us.
We're going to shut the lights off on this one, all right? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. All right. This brings us to item nine, which is boards and committees review sunsetting animal shelter committee. Ms. Barkman, I see her here. Perfect.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This evening, what I have before you is the sunsetting of the animal shelter. So, not the shelter, the shelter committee. Sorry, didn't mean to cause a panic. So the, as you may remember, during the one of three or four work sessions that we had, I think we covered this particular board, and the direction the commission gave was to sunset it by the end of the year. And so what we've drafted here allows the group to continue meeting through December 31st. It gives them the option to close early if they want, so if they kind of feel like we've reached the conclusion point that they would like to, as long as it's before December 31st, they can do that, and all they need to do is cancel any remaining meetings for the year. So this is a follow-up to the direction that staff received during that meeting.
Questions? Commissioner Hunt?
I know it was a gap earlier, but this is just to make it clear that this does not in any way affect the operations of the animal shelter.
No.
The animal shelter will continue to run, the animals in the shelter will continue to receive the services that they're getting, the assistance that they're getting. Their humans will get the assistance that they need in taking care of those animals. And that the purpose of the committee was simply to be an advisory board to the commission, not to the director, who now operates in that advisory role to the commission. Is that right?
Yes, so this board, way back when, was created at a time where we didn't have a professional manager. It was run by a group of volunteers, and that situation has since evolved. Now we have more full-time staff, we have, we're, I don't want to say more dedicated volunteers, but we have a small group of regular volunteers who are working at the shelter on a regular basis. And so the, the conditions have evolved in a way that they're all, the recommendation I had made was to either significantly revise or just simply sunset this group.
Commissioner Douglas?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, Commissioner Hunt represents the commission, the city commission on that board now, but I preceded her at a time when the members of that committee were struggling to do fundraising events because of the burden of the Open Meetings Act. I mean, they had challenges setting up subcommittee meetings, is that a majority? You know, what decisions can we make? And they really could not be as nimble as they needed to be. And at that time, we brought in the Friends of the Library to come in and talk about their origins and how they operate. And I sensed then, and you may sense that as well, that there's real interest in wanting to support and raise funds for the animal shelter, and that in many ways, a Friends of organization like we have at the library would be, would function, would serve the animal shelter better. And so I hope that, you know, those people who are involved and others who, because we can only have seven people on that board, others will now be able to come back in in a meaningful role with the, with the Friends of the Animal Shelter. And to those who say that the staff there needs advice or the board needs advice, a previous city manager pointed out to me that we have departments in this city that have enormous functions. We have a finance department, we have a treasury department, and that, all staffed by professionals, and they do not require citizens oversight or advisory bodies to do their job. And I think the animal shelter is now that, in that condition with capable professional management.
Commissioner Hunt?
Just to piggyback off of Shar's statement, and it's a bit of a comment now, or commentary now, that the members of the group are currently looking at transforming this committee, or what would be the individuals of this committee now soon after the sun sets, into a Friends of type. So there can be more focusing on fundraising rather than what would be operations.
Anybody else? I'll just add, you know, since we got professional management in the animal shelter, it is night and day difference. And I think that having the right expert that knows how to not just run a facility, but also how to do it in a compassionate way, we're very, very fortunate. Hopefully, many, 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 many years from now, it'll, we'll probably have to find a new manager at some point, and I think that we're fortunate to have a direct chain of command through the PDE all the way up to this commission to make sure we have, hopefully, someone that can fill those shoes. But we're very fortunate, it's run very well, the animals are well cared for, they're getting out and being adopted at record levels, and I think, you know, what we can do is we can up the game with more fundraising. So I think it really is fortunate that, you know, we'll still have all of that passion from the committee members, but focused in a way that can do the most benefit for the, for the animals that unfortunately find themselves there by raising funds and getting them even more, because I know even with more money, our manager can do even a better job. So we're very lucky in that regard. Commissioner Douglas?
Yeah, I'll move approval of the resolution.
Motion by Commissioner Douglas, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Duba. Discussion? Mr. Colo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, I agree with everything that's been said. Also want to send the commission's thanks to the members, both the past and present, of the Animal Shelter Committee. They've done a great job filling in, working with the city, and I'm excited to see what they do next.
All right, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes.
Thank you.
All right. So this brings us to item 10, which is the approval of the 2023-2024 Downtown Outdoor Ice Rink Agreement. Mr. Fenton, I think I'm handing this one over to you.
I can take that with some assist from Mr. Kretchowski. Thank you again, Mayor, and members of the city commission. As you know, last year's Centennial Commons hosted the Downtown Ice Rink for the first time last year, and the proposal in front of you seeks to use Centennial Commons yet again as the site for the Downtown Ice Rink in downtown Royal Oak from November 17th until February 18th of 2024. I will speak directly to the contract that's here before you right now, and with regard to that, it's pretty simple. Jonathan Witz and Associates, and Mr. Witz is in attendance here, so you can clarify any points that go to you, has offered to maintain the ice rink for zero fee. In return, he has asked for the city to incur the liability, if there is some, for this rink. And so by way of example, because this is not the first year we've done the rink, Mr. Witz was able to refine what he believed the operating budget of the rink to be, and that's $450,000. Now, that is immediately offset, because for us as a city, we're looking at how we can limit our liability. That is immediately offset in the contract by a DDA sponsorship that must be procured before we move forward. That's $150,000. And it's also offset by guaranteed sponsorship that Witz and Associates is bringing to this project in the amount of $125,000. So if you add those up together, understanding again the $450,000... So if you add those up together, understanding again the $450,000 budget, that provides a gap of $175,000. Based upon last year's numbers and projections into this year, it's estimated that $165,000 may be received by the city for skate rentals and private rentals, and an additional $5,000 in concessions. And that leaves a $5,000 gap. And we're hopeful that if the project is successful, we'll be able to close that gap. Other ways that we're able to limit the city's liability, we've put very, we put into the contract that this is a not-to-exceed budget. While there is a contingency amount that is built into the budget, that money cannot be tapped without the city manager's approval. And so we're looking at how we can cut expenses first before incurring additional liability. The other part that we've built into the budget, and I believe the budget is in the contract as Exhibit 3, is we will be conducting a third-party audit as well, and we built that into the budget. We will not be doing that internally, we will be doing that with a third party to ensure proper compliance. Other than that, the contract is pretty similar to how it was last year. And even last year's contract, should no one have shown up at the rink, we would have incurred that liability there as well. So the only thing that has changed from last year's contract to this year's contract was a revenue-sharing apparatus that was pretty convoluted, and this agreement, in my opinion, is more clean. Since this is a one-year agreement, we are recommending that we could use ARPA money to offset any potential liabilities to the city. And with that, I'll pass this along to Mr. Kretchowski if you have any other comments. But it is consistent with the strategic plan, specifically welcoming engaged and livable community and vibrant local economy. I don't think I could have said it anyway. Unless there's any questions, I'd leave it to maybe Mr. Witz to answer any of your questions if the board has any.
Well, do we have any questions for our team first? Always a risk, always an opportunity. Mr. Witz, do you have anything you want to contribute or add to the discussion? I'll afford you that opportunity.
Thank you. I just want to just say how positive this process was, working with Deputy City Manager Fenton and interim City Attorney Kretchowski. The two of them were available, and we had very good discussions over a short time period to knock things out. And the process was just vastly improved from last year. And I just want to recognize, you know, the, you know, just how productive and positive the process was with city staff. And so I wanted to say that. I would also just say quickly, very good attendance last year. Seventeen thousand five hundred folks, another minimum 10,000 people that were spectators, grandparents, parents that didn't skate, just a lot of activity. I have positive signatures from local businesses if needed. The impact, even if, even many who said the impact wasn't specifically great, but they definitely want to see the ring come back and appreciate the promotion. So there's a variety of levels of support that I have brought as well. And just, we did a lot of fun things out there, from holiday, from holiday events to the coolest thing I've ever seen in my life, which is five and six-year-olds playing outdoor hockey in their own winter classic. Thousands and thousands of dollars of positive promotion for the city off of numerous media outlets. A complete collaboration of numerous corporate stakeholders that brought into the event, from Henry Ford to M3 Investments, to Baker College, to Razor Law, across the board. So this was definitely a team effort, and it was paid for by the citizens and the people that used it. It was paid for local business, it was paid for by the DDA. And it was just such an enjoyment to see, because this, this project was under the microscope last year, and it was not an enjoyable process. I remember limping out, limping up here to, you know, for the final push on it and just appreciate, you know, how everyone worked together to make this happen. I have many, many, many more things to say, but I will keep it, you know, short and brief and just say it was, this was a great experience and we, you can count on our best efforts from marketing, sponsorship, sales, grounds maintenance, everything that we can do to make this project another success. And we suggested one year again, so we can continue to learn and make sure it's the right thing to do, because it's a significant investment and appreciate all that the city's doing, and we're just happy to be a part of it. So, and I will just say this, on the idea of the fact that we are getting the rinked for Winter Blast, which is part of this, we are carrying our weight on that by raising and agreeing to raise $125,000 in sponsorship, and we're a third of the way there already. And we have a deadline that we know we're going to meet to get this done. So I'm available for questions.
Questions for Mr. Witz. Commissioner Douglas?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Witz. I went to Taco Fest and was pretty dismayed by the damage that was done to the sod, the grass that wears, where the ice rink was. And I'd like to know what you're going to do to make sure that doesn't happen again.
So there's a couple of things. I think working, working with the city and the grounds team is, is the first thing in doing that. The second thing is not using a sand base. We're going to have far less impact by building a decking over the sod. So a strengthening of the sod at the end of the season and putting a decking on top is going to be much better than loads and loads of sand getting moved to and from the, you know, from the, the project. We dealt with worry-free directly on putting new sod in. We all know it looked spectacular, you know, when it got installed. And, you know, in fairness to Taco Fest, I know it did its work on the sod, but there were several events that, when you have heavy rains and use of grass, whether it be the Juneteenth, or you had the Chamber Music Event, there was, you know, I took pictures before Taco Fest, and there was definitely wear and tear on the, you know, on the sod that I have on my phone that, you know, showed that there was damages, missing area of grass. And one thing I can just say is that the thing that I've enjoyed most is just how much the park has been used and enjoyed by thousands of people, whether it be winter or summer. And one thing about Taco Fest, you know, there was a little bit of tearing up, but the other thing is there were a lot of kids running around, having the time of their lives. And whether it was in the fountains, you saw the fountains have their greatest use during Taco Fest, and just all the assets that you guys put together, this beautiful park has been put to use. I got to walk with the mayor on Juneteenth and got to see it, whether it be pony rides or other things. I was there for the Chamber Concert to watch Alexander Jancheck and the chairs going on and off the grass. And there's just, you know, it's part of use. So, I mean, we solely can't bear responsibility, but we will assure you, Commissioner Douglas, that we will be team players in, in working with the city. We have resources in Detroit and contacts with the DDP on how they use their grass so much and have some budget to do constant repairs and upgrade. I think you could look at alternative surfaces. But whatever the case is, we're here to be team players, we're here to activate the park, and we're here to be fair and, you know, program it and, you know, work with the city, deputy city manager and city staff and worry-free like we did in getting the sod back on and just being good team players to, to do the right thing. But the biggest answer to your question is we have a better base, and we are responsible for putting in good condition when we're, we're done with the rink. And we guarantee that we will do that, just like we did last year.
And what is being done either on, by yourself or by the city to ameliorate the damage that we see there now?
Okay, so two, one, one encouraging thing in talking to worry-free, a lot of the, not a lot, but a good amount of the grass that got damaged has regrown, and those spaces have really tightened up. It has gotten greener since Taco Fest, so there's been an improvement on its own. The delay in the fix means there's needs to be a three or four-week period for the area that's truly, you know, that got incapacitated and is not going to grow back. It needs to be not walked on or used. And again, the great part about the park is that there's events every week between now and September. So we'll, you know, that period will probably happen after September, where those areas can be tightened up and cleaned up. I am not, we, as I said to city manager break, we are willing to contribute our fair share. There was a cost that was given to the city for those repairs. And again, I'm sure that that cost is less now that you've seen so much grass grow back. But we are prepared to contribute our fair share to it. And again, we're, I think, knowing what we dealt with and what happens in dealing with rains, I think there can be some budget and ongoing planning, you know, to just do, you know, a better job in, you know, in responding to, you know, to the, to the use of, to the use of the grass. But I, I think you, I will just say this, in working with worry-free, they are exceptional as well. As, what they do, they put great sod in, and they, they build flowers already on the perimeter edge, and, and it's already been touched up. And I just think we can get to a good solution with, again, the most important thing is, is a park has been just fully activated winter and summer. It is just the most beautiful thing to see. And, you know, for three months, we brought, and many times more in the winter than in the summer, and just watching the summer glow as well, it's just, it's just been, it's been great to watch. But we will bring our expertise, we will collaborate, we will pay fair share, and we will work closely, you know, with our team and worry-free. And the biggest, you know, answer is, is that we have a good new base, and I think that's going to make the sod stronger going into the season.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Other questions for Mr. Witz?
I would add, site restoration is part of this budget in the contract, by the way.
Oh, thank you.
Mr. Cole?
Thank you, Ms. Ray. Mr. Witz, can you talk about, we've hinted at it a little tonight, but can you talk about, you know, we went through the process last year, we figured out what worked and what didn't work. Can you let us know some of the improvements that residents and guests will see when they come to the rink, and then maybe some other, some other items that will be kind of behind the scenes? For instance, you've talked about the sand might be gone and how that would improve.
So, so the biggest improvement came from feedback from this body. Both Commissioner Dubak and Mayor Fournier commented on the quality of the skate rentals. So that was the biggest focus, was improving the skate rentals. That is the number-one improvement that we've made. We got a guarantee, we have a new brand of skates that has to be either new or one year. We had older skates last year, so you're going to see a far better product there. And that's where we got the most feedback. I think, again, I feel great about how things, how things ran last year. And I think the second-best improvement is our lessons on the budget. You know, just, we took, we had a budget that ended up being, you know, $515,000, and the lessons we learned, you know, are going to create some more efficiency. And the other benefit from last year, this equipment that we purchased, like mats, skating mats, and the huts that were, again, the suggestion of the mayor, which were a great addition on, on how people get their concessions and how people get their skate rentals. It was just festive and wintery and, you know, and, you know, I think those are things that will be retained and also retained at a more efficient budget. But we just want to keep innovating, more private parties if we can during times when the rink's not being used. I think that'll catch on more school events where we can do it, more events for children with special needs, as we had a great autism event, we had a pride event, just continue to work on, you know, unique special events to add in. And I want to do three weekends of kids hockey, five and six-year-old kids hockey, if our hockey coach will allow it. But I just will say innovation, efficiency, budget improvement, and better skate rentals would be the answer to your question.
Commissioner Cole?
Great. Thank you, Mr. Witz.
Any other questions for Mr. Witz? All right. Well, thank you for your time. We'll bring the discussion back to this side. Commissioner Duba?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to thank staff for working in earnest to get this, this before us in a timely fashion. I think what's a really well-thought-out contract, especially given what we learned last year. And I know things got a little clunky kind of in the, in the time crunch. But I think what we saw was a tremendous asset to our community in our new downtown park that many of us worked for six years to make happen, from concept to completion. I know Commissioner Douglas served on the downtown park planning task force with me, and I assure you, none of that conversation was like, let's just make it pretty, just so people can see a nice park. The whole plan was always to have an active community space. And an active community space is not conducive to a consistently lush lawn. During Memorial Day, we had the Boy Scouts camping up on the hill, and all day and evening, they were playing football down on the glade. Not great for the grass. I don't care. That park is to be used by residents and enjoyed by residents and people coming to visit. And what we discussed last year was that in these four months of winter, when the park could be a barren, cold winter wasteland with the occasional person huddled running across it from point A to point B, or fully activated as it was last year, with not just skaters, as Mr. Witz pointed out, but every time I was down there, which was often, and I don't know if it's in the budget, but I had to buy my kids all skates because we were going so often, and saw folks from the neighborhood. But also, all the fire pits, all the chairs were being utilized. Everyone was sitting around there because of the place-making and the music, and it was somewhere to be in those cold winter months. The finances worked out with minimal liability to the city, and definitely the earned media and communication and lift that we got out of it was a huge boost for our community and for our downtown, and for our downtown businesses. There's, there's just no denying that. And so for the minimal risk, which I don't even say it's risk, like if our end is, like our bad end is five, 10 grand, what we're getting out of this is worth exponentially more than that, even if it comes with a little troubled grass. But that's going to come with anything we do in that park. Grass and large amounts of people generally don't go great together. I went to Michigan State, every time there's a tailgate, the grass, there's a home game, the grass is dead for two weeks. That's just, that's just how it works. And then they, they reestablish it. It's just part of the, the system there. And I see no reason why we can't have these things coexist, a fully activated park. And yeah, we'll, we'll have to put some work into maintaining the lawn, but a well-maintained lush lawn is not my priority, and it was never the priority as far as I know for the design of this park. It was for a community gathering space, and this is totally aligned with that. So I think this has been a tremendous success, and that was our first year. And this go-around, I'm sure it's going to be more successful, especially with the higher quality skates, because I know that was one of the number one things that we heard from people, they couldn't skate very long because the rentals were
Ice salt blisters.
A little rough. But, I mean, just the activation and the energy it brings to our city, and the very important for our retailers' holiday, holiday time, but then even the post-New Year time, when things generally get really, really slow, gave people a reason to be downtown. And it's going to do it again this year. So I'm very excited to move to approve this contract.
So we have motion by Commissioner Duba, second by Commissioner Cole. Additional discussion? Commissioner Douglas?
Thank you, Mayor. I voted against this last time, and one of my concerns was the restoration of the grass. And we saw, when we first put the sod in, in April and May, it looked beautiful, and everybody said, yay, win. I, and I would like to know, and perhaps Commissioner Duba has answered my question, if we had held this event like in one of our parks, in Red Run Park, with grass that's well-established and has been growing there for a long time as opposed to fairly new sod, would we experience the same amount of, the same problems? So, to be determined, and perhaps worry-free or, or other cities have experiences that would enlighten us here. I am, I'm hoping that it is true that the decking approach to this protects the, the new grass that will be replaced, resodded, reseeded, whatever. So I, but I will say that my jury is out on this, and I, I want it to be a success. I always agreed that if, you know, if this is going to cost us $30,000 or $15,000, that's a worthy investment in, in, in our city, in recreation for our people. I have no objection to the, the financial arrangements here. It's just that, you know, the park will be used for six months, May through October, for outdoor warm weather events. And I don't want them to be damaged or harmed by what we do for two and a half months with the ice rink. I will vote in favor of this, but I'm, I'm withholding my final opinion for another year.
Fair enough.
I think I share some of those sentiments as well. I want to give it another shot on the grass with September, you know, coming around and having it all cleaned up. And I think it'll be stronger, and I think with the platform, I mean, clearly the grass is rooted right, so it doesn't have to be put in in May, and, and see where it goes. And if we get to a point next year where the grass And if we get to a point next year where the grass is still an issue, then I think we have to really be innovative and think about some really good ideas. But I agree that it was a wild success, considering it was the first year we did it, considering all the amount of work city staff had to do, Mr. Witz's organization had to do, securing a rink, building it, going through two or three mini Zambonis, whatever it was, it was kind of interesting watching that. And just the people that came from outside of Royal Oak, I think it was a Tuesday night, and the place was hopping. It was after planning commission. I had my skates in my car, and I'm like, I'm going to go out there and, you know, go around a few times. And Mr. Witz had been there, and we just wanted to ask people where they are from. And I think it took us, what, 15 people before we got someone from Royal Oak, which is great. I mean, we want to share our community. On a Tuesday night, bringing other people's money into our community is a really important thing, you know, for retailers, for business, for, you know, supporting the rink and really showcasing that Royal Oak is this awesome, welcoming, exciting, vibrant place. And so anytime we can do that for a mere cost of $15,000 or $30,000 or whatever it is, is a heck of a steal, aside from all the amazing enjoyment that just witnessing people coming together, kids staying off their cellphones and iPads and spending a couple hours getting some exercise, you know, watching Commissioner Dubac's son put on some of those skates. And they're like, ooh, I think he might be a little sore. But, you know, all in all, a lot of fun. And I think next year's just going to be, I mean, with the lessons learned, I think it's even going to be more of a wild success. And we already have a built-in experience curve. Folks have come to it, and they're going to come again. So, yeah, I'm excited to support this contract. And although I will say, I don't want to say I can't wait for winter, because that's definitely not true. But when winter finally arrives and it gets cold and the overcast of Michigan that stays for six months is here, I will definitely look forward to the ice rink and getting outside and enjoying some good tunes, good food, and good skate.
All right. I'll call for the vote. All's in favor, say aye. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Hunt. No, Commissioner Hunt.
I was just going to say, I concur with exactly every single thing that Commissioner Dubac said, with the exception of having to buy skates. But there was an evening where a particular radio station put on a promotion, and I spoke with some people who came out particularly for that promotion, who had never come to Royal Oak to be entertained and fell in love with the city. So you're right, Mr. Mayor, people were coming in from outside of Royal Oak who'd never come to Royal Oak before and now are frequent visitors of Royal Oak. So things like that, that, you know, bring new visitors in and make Royal Oak the huge success that it is.
Yeah. Two touchpoints. All right. Anybody else? All right, I'll call for the vote. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, that brings us to approval of Winter Blast Royal Oak 2024-2025 Festival Agreement.
We'll keep these festive winter vibes going here. Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Commission. As you know, Witz and Associates successfully relocated Winter Blast from Detroit to Royal Oak in 2022 and 2023. And the agreement before you right now is to extend that arrangement through 2024 and 2025. It is estimated by the promoter that 65,000 people attended Winter Blast Royal Oak last year alone. And echoing a comment that was said here at the commission table, during one of the least busy weekends probably in the city of Royal Oak in February. Winter Blast 2024 will occur during February 1st through the 4th. As a contract, the agreement is pretty much the same from the last one. We're offering a $100,000 sponsorship in support of the festival, and Witz and Associates is guaranteeing to spend at least $550,000 on the event, with their management fee capped at $50,000. Other than that, we clarified some of the city provisions relating to labor and city staff. But other than that, it is a strict renewal of an agreement that we had already approved here at the table. Again, this contract has been reviewed by our city attorney, and it is consistent with the city's strategic plan, particularly welcoming, engaged in livable community, and vibrant local economy. So with that, I can answer any other further questions, or, again, Mr. Witz is in attendance as well.
Any questions for Mr. Fenton? Mr. Witz?
Yes.
Again, it's always a risk and always an opportunity.
Just I want to extend not only thanks to the deputy city manager and interim city attorney, but I would also like to say thanks to Chief Moore and his team, and just congratulations on the accreditation. I get the pleasure and privilege of working with Chief Moore on events and watching the planning process and just the level of safety, attention, planning. And we like to contribute and collaborate, and it's truly, you know, good meetings, good planning, good execution. So I just wanted to say that. This event, we didn't collect our entire management fee and like the rink, these are labors of love for us in the sense of giving back, creating winter fun, as we did when it was located in the city of Detroit. We had the blessing of doing events on the riverfront and giving back in the wintertime. And this is another example of that. This event is free admission, unlike other events. I think the program also has a parking opportunity to help offset revenue just with small parking fees. And we learned a good lesson at Taco Fest on the exit paying on the way in. And, you know, I think we have a really good chance, a good opportunity of improving that for this year. So I see that as a great improvement, just in case I was to get a question of how would we improve it. I think that we've demonstrated we can do that. And I also just want to thank the city for one more thing. We were anticipating a bitter cold weekend, and with two and a half weeks to go, not only did the chief and city manager's office, they approved a change, we would have had a devastating result. And with all the investment, the vendors and local businesses would not have had, you know, half or, you know, maybe even have only 25% of the positive impact we had, thanks to the city working with us and just a young man's effort on all parts. So I just want to say really mostly thank you that we're committed to put on a great show and a great program and continue to innovate. Mount Brighton is back to do the Snow Hill. The rink is a great centerpiece and a great way to activate. It'll be free skating. And just one last thing from the skating rink I didn't get to mention, is over 1,000 people skated for free from the city of Royal Oak at free skating nights. We had a promotion with the library. So again, you have free admission for Winter Blast, free skating opportunities, high value. And I hope that risk of reward was short enough, and that's all I have to say, Mayor. Thank you.
Questions for Mr. Witz? Oh, sorry, Mr. Witz, just if there's any questions. No questions? No questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Witz. Commissioner Cole?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kind of like with the ice rink, we saw the first year was okay, and then, you know, we hope that the second year with ice rink is going to be, you know, an even better success, much like with Winter Blast. You know, we did it the first year. It was good as a first year. The second year, I think last year, was a great improvement, and I can't wait till what we see in the third year. I mean, this is something that people like. You know, it was sad that we did have to delay it, but it was frigid cold, it projected to be frigid cold, and it's heavy we made that delay, but it worked. And it brought people once again into our downtown in a month where people just usually wouldn't come. So this is a great economic driver for the community, being a free event. It's great for residents to come out and enjoy it and for our neighboring communities to come out also. So saying that, I'm looking forward to the third year of this and move approval of the contract as presented.
Okay. Your motion by Commissioner Cole, is your second? Second by Commissioner Dubac. All right, further discussion?
Yeah, I'll just add, you know, one thing when I say Mr. Witz, risk or opportunity that's not directed at him personally, it's just we never want to make any petitioner or anybody up for a contract feel like it's mandatory to come up and face the commission. So I just try to clarify to everybody, those comments are just in general, not a reflection on Mr. Witz. So, yeah, I think this is going to be great. My family, we enjoyed it. You know, Winter Blast, we like getting outside. You know, the spirits are high with folks walking around in our community in the middle of winter. And just like Commissioner Hunt said, it really brings in a lot of different people that, you know, have positive experiences here, especially right in our new park. I mean, it's a great advertisement for everything that Royal Oak is. And they come back. They come back. They come back. They might even move here. You know what I mean? But they come back and they visit our shops and say, that Royal Oak place was really awesome. Let's come back. All right. With that, I'll call for the vote. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right. And I think that brings us to the end of the agenda tonight. Notwithstanding anything for the betterment of our fine community, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Commissioner Douglas, supported by Commissioner Dubac. Discussion on this very critical motion.
Let's put this meeting on ice.
Oh, man. We're going to get a frosty reception on that joke that wasn't as great as it could have been.
I've had a blast.
Oh, man. All right.
What do you got?
We're going to put this one on ice. All right, don't worry. Oh, I did?
Yeah.
Let me win.
Oh, okay.
All right, we'll let him win. All right. Gosh darn it, I'm out. I don't have any dad jokes. No longer the reigning dad joke champion.
You can keep the shirt.
Oh, thank you. All right. I'll call for the vote. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. We adjourn.